Okay, we're ready to begin. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Operations Committee meeting of the Bay State Development Board to order Friday, August 19th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Postello. Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Thank you. Were there any public comments, cards received, Myra?
No, no public comment cards were received.
Great, and we can move on to item number four on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the June 10th, 2022 Operations Committee Open Meeting. These meeting minutes were distributed to everyone in advance for review. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
More seconds.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number five is approval of the minutes of the June 10th, 2022, Combined Audit Finance and Administration and Operations Committee Open Meeting. These minutes were also in your board packet. I also need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. We'll move to item five, which is the contract modification of the elevator escalator full maintenance and repair. And I believe that Tom Curran and Chuck Stewart have some comments for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting for your consideration a request to authorize a modification to Bay State's existing contract for elevator and escalator full maintenance and repair with Tissin Crupp Elevator. Our current elevator and escalator maintenance contract was approved by the Board of Commissioners in April 2017, and that original contract was not to exceed $4 million. A fourth modification to that contract is what is being proposed today to include additional funds and a time extension so that we can have these services in place until a new contract is awarded. During the last option year of the contract, there were numerous expenses to address findings from state and Missouri inspections and repair costs for decaying infrastructure. This included structural repairs to elevators at the Grand Station, valves and control motors at North Hanley and Forest Park stations, and synchronization valves at Eighth and Pine. We have multiple out-of-scope maintenance requests currently, including necessary improvements at the Grand, Eighth and Convention Center stations, as well as the North Hanley parking structure. Assessments were performed in April 2022 at each MetroLink facility and rail station elevator, and these assessments have provided us with a better understanding of our current needs and conditions. We may need more frequent service on older units as our system is aging, as well as more staffing provided to Metro by the general contractor for these services. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval, modification number four to Bay State's existing contract with Tissin Crupp Elevator for continued maintenance and repair of elevators and escalators in an amount not to exceed $600,000 through November 30th of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have our project and contract engineer on standby if there are any technical questions in regard to the elevators.
Any question for the board? For Tom? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. We'll move on to-
Chair, if the- I just got in. I've been trying to get in for 15 minutes. I don't know what happened, so I'm here now.
Thank you so much. Myra, can you make a note that Commissioner Cox has joined the meeting?
So noted.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. We're on item number seven, which is any unscheduled business. Pretty short agenda today. Talby, do you have any unscheduled business for the committee?
I have no unscheduled business, Commissioner. Thank you.
We can move on to item number eight, which is the operations report, and I would ask Chuck Stewart to provide that for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are a few things I'd like to highlight on our performance summary and our workforce update. These items will probably come up again later in other conversations in the Audit and Administration Committee meetings. From a ridership standpoint, Metro Bus is up 1.6%. Metro Link is up 18.4%, which is- these numbers are significant to last year, but not significant to where we were during fiscal year 2019. So although we're showing improvement, we're still a long way from where we once were as a transit operation. I'd like to also highlight, which we'll probably be discussing later, our expenses at this time. Our expenses fiscal year-to-date budget versus actual are down like 27, almost $28 million. Another item, we are talking about Coleride. Coleride had a 16.4% trip denial rate during the month of June. Again, this is because of the shortage in operators and other issues. One of the things that we are looking at at Coleride right now is that we have this huge footprint over the Missouri side of the region, and Coleride was designed to operate this area within three-quarter mile of a fixed route. So we're currently looking at that to see if we can get some efficiencies out of bringing Coleride back into its proper footprint. From there, I'd kind of like to talk about our workforce update. We've had 325 new hires since we started the bonus program. 105 sign-on bonuses have been paid to date. So that's not really an indication of this being a very successful pro at this time. We are hiring, but we are not retaining, and we'll have some recommendations on how to handle that situation going forward. Metro Bus missed 2,400 trips during June, about 2.23% of its total trips, again due to our workforce shortage. Metro Link has not missed any trips, but the reality of the situation is that Metro, at many times, is being operated by TSMs and not operators. We talked about the Coleride situation. We have, in terms of our recruiting, and again, during the Audit Finance Committee meeting, we have a proposal about retaining, attracting and retaining personnel going forward. Recruiting, we have, in June, we received 106 applications from Metro Bus. Only 11 in process right now. We are having a great difficulty, not only in attracting, but also retaining, even to the extent of retaining people through the entire process of training. Our numbers in terms of staffing levels, we're down 157 Metro Bus operators, 13 Metro Link operators, and 55 Coleride operators. Again, we will recommend some things that we want to do in the future in terms of improving those stats. Overall, out of 374 maintenance and mechanic positions, we are down 64. So that is my operations report at this time. I'd be happy to entertain any specific questions. But again, I think we will be revisiting this as we move forward during this meeting process.
Are there any questions for Chuck? I just have one, actually. Well, two. One is, and I know we're going to address this more in executive session under Personnel Matters, but what kind of- are there exit interviews that are done with potential employees that are in training? Or do they just not show up? Or can you give me some idea of why we're, you know-
Sure. I'm sorry. So basically, in our training situation, it's a not-show-up kind of situation. People just drop out. They just stop coming. So that's a challenge for us. We also have stats that show those that make it through the training process have a tendency to leave very shortly after they're given their assignment. We're thinking that maybe they don't understand the job that they signed up for. So we're trying to improve our efforts in providing that information, give them opportunities to ride along, to work with experienced drivers, to see what it's all about. But the bottom line is when they come onboard, when they start their first assignment, they're low on the totem pole, and they don't get the most glamorous routes to start with. They have concerns about the security and all of those things. And we have been working very, very hard on improving those situations. So we've got to really improve the quality of that job, and we have plans for doing that.
Thank you. The only other quick question I had, Chuck, was on budgeted versus actual total revenue, passenger revenue. So we had some increase in ridership, which is great, but we didn't quite meet our fare box return in our passenger revenue projections. Was it because we didn't have as large of an increase in ridership as we anticipated?
That is true. Yes, that is exactly the case.
Okay. Those were the only questions I had. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none. Thanks so much for the report. And we can move on to item number nine, which is President or CEO report. Do you have any comments for us, Talby?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Just have three brief comments. Number one is, on the 22nd on Monday, you guys have seen a couple of memos in this regard, but I want to really commend staff for the very hard work they've done in the flood recovery. The big deal with the 22nd is that will be the date in which we will be running MetroLink trains all the way through. As you may know, we have been challenged in having to run a bus bridge between Skinker and Forest Park. We have been trying very, very hard to make the 22nd, in particular because of how many customers we have who are students, who will be obviously in class and around as of next week. So albeit, there will be- it is moving through a construction section, so it's a little bit slower service, as in there are some cab restrictions while we are doing the long-term fixes associated with that. But the service will increase tremendously. Maintenance of way, Darren Curry and his staff have been working double-overtime type shifts to try to get this, to get the repairs in order to look at this modification. I will say that OCC staff overseeing the trains, they're going to have a very tricky job to do in these complicated train movements, but the result is, is a better product for our customers, and in the end, that's obviously what we're shooting for. So I'm very excited about that. Also, I just wanted to let everybody know that I am continuing to meet with Alderman regarding the north side, south side alignment and the Missouri side that is moving forward. We will have an update meeting at East-West Gateway regarding that alignment on August 31st. And in addition, we had FTA in town and talked specifically about entry into full funding grant agreement and working through new starts. It was a very good meeting. I will note that part of that was a presentation on our flood recovery efforts and our federal partners. They prompted us to actually, when submitting for our FEMA flood relief, to look at the system regarding resiliency. In other words, look at efforts that we could make so that should another flood hit, we would not be as devastated. And just to give you an example of those efforts, one of the big cost items that were critically damaged in the flood from the 26 were our station houses, our signal house. So when we replace those, we'll be looking at actually putting them up on structure, so simply raising them so that they're more resilient in a flood circumstance. And what I want to say is, we really welcome this partnership from our federal partners, and I think that those recovery efforts are moving. But obviously, there's a lot of complicated layers to them, including getting as much funding from our federal partners as possible. Also, I just want to point out, I apologize for the split nature of Ops and Audit Finance, but it is actually number six on Audit and Finance, where we have the retention. You may recall that as a Board of Commissioners, you challenged us with looking at some issues associated with retention. How can we indeed kind of confront some of the efforts that Commissioner Winmiller was asking Chuck about? I encourage you to look at those. There's obviously a long laundry list of things. This maybe is not the most artful term, but it is an effort to try to look at the stickiness of our employment. In other words, how do we get people in the door who are developing careers at Metro? That is the real strength of our fundamental employment, are those folks who've been with us for five, 10, 15 years. And so we're trying to look at those aspects and think how employment at Metro can be more fulfilling. And there's a laundry list of those items at number six. I think staff's done a good job with putting those together, giving you guys an idea of what those costs would be. And we'll see. We're trying to look at very innovative things. Some will work, some will not. And, but I think that they are the effort that you're requesting. And that concludes my remarks this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Talby. Any questions?
No question, but I just wanted to add a comment. Talby mentioned the bus bridge. I took that the other day. And I had actually a pretty good experience with it. So I want to commend all these staff for devising that and then all of the workers there on the front lines. You know, the bus was right there at the Skinker Station, towards Forest Park. There were MetroLink staff, or Metro staff, excuse me, directing any passengers from the bus down to the metro in case anybody got lost on the way. It was as good an experience as you could possibly have in this situation. And I think that's a credit both to Talby's direct staff who planned it and to all the Metro employees that were there and able to assist all of the passengers and riders. So thank you to everybody for that. And I wanted to know that, you know, we know this, and they're doing a good job with a tough situation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, I have a question for Toby. During the flooding and destruction that happened, are you eligible for any help from the government, like FEMA?
Yes, Commissioner. So our recent estimate was, is close to $40 million. The $40 million is essentially the culmination of multi-tiered application to FEMA for catastrophic flood relief. That FEMA funding will then go in a conduit funding to what's called 5374 money to FTA. As you may recall, all of our money from the federal flow through FTA in an oversight capacity. I will note, though, that that $40 million will be offset by a catastrophic insurance policy that we do hold from through Lloyds of London. We'll have to see what that exact number is, but the limit on that policy is $25 million. So we do have, I think, a sound recovery financial package in a combination of ways. But absolutely, I am working with our- for instance, our federal lobbyist was in town with FTA because, parallel to that application, we have to create a federal legislative strategy to be sure that those funds are appropriated into FEMA. Okay, we need to fill that bucket. And you may recall, when Hurricane Sandy went through the east coast, there was a legislative effort shortly after it that was championed to fill essentially their bucket, although let's just say the east coast bucket was a lot bigger than ours. But we are working on a legislative strategy, actually, to partner with the state of Kentucky, which all saw the same kind of flood devastation and work together on that flood legislative effort to be sure that that funding will be in place. So far, all of that's been very positively received, and we're just trying to be sure to coordinate all those efforts with our federal partners at FTA and, of course, our application process through our emergency management coordinator here at Metro.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Talby. Item number 10, call for future meeting dates. Myra, will you let us know when the next board and committee meetings are?
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 23rd. The next Safety and Security meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 6th. And the next Operations and Audit Finance and Administration Committee meetings are scheduled for Friday, October 14th. All of the meetings will be beginning at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. I need a motion that the committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under Bay State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080 D1 Legal, D3 Personnel, and D5 Employee Negotiations. We have a-
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Great, and we will see you all in a few minutes. Thank you. The committee has reconvened to the open session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 10th, 2022, Combined Audit Finance and Administration and Operations Committee Executive Session as a closed record?
More moves.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thanks so much. Now, if there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thanks to everyone. Thanks to the interpreters. And Operations Committee has ended, and I think we will now go to Finance, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Beach.
I'll call the meeting of the Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order this Friday, August 19th at 9:35 a.m. Myra, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Postello. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chair, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Myra, were there any speaker cards that were received for today's committee meeting?
No public comments were submitted.
Okay, thank you. Item four, the approval of the minutes of the June 10th, Audit Finance Administration Committee Open Meeting. You've all been provided to you all for review. Or if there are no comments, be happy to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. More moves.
Is there a second? We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Item five, you all been provided the minutes of the June 10th, Combined Audit Finance Administration and the Operations Committee Open Meeting Minutes. Be happy to entertain any comments. If not, be pleased to entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Item six, Chuck Stewart, attracting and retaining talent. Please proceed, Chuck.
Thank you. Good morning again for the new meeting, and welcome additional members of the BSD staff. We have a presentation for you today. We've been talking for the last several months about attracting and retaining talent and the issues that we've been dealing with as it relates to that. So the Organizational Effectiveness Team with Diana Benz and Dave Tobin have been doing considerable research in that. We're trying to think outside the box as to what we can do in terms of attracting and retaining and overall making Bay State Development a better company to work for, to get back to the situation where people enjoy coming to work. They like their jobs. They like working for Bay State Development. And that's across the board, not only our represented employees, but our salaried employees as well. I've already reviewed with you our current workforce statistics and our operating statistics, so you kind of know the situation that we're in. Basically, for the last year or so, we have been losing the battle. Okay? In your briefing paper, there's one line that kind of says it all. During the first three quarters of fiscal year 2022, we hired 368 people, yet we lost 469. We have to do something differently. As we presented our stats in past meetings, the board asked what you could do to help. What help can you give us in helping to alleviate this problem? So we've put together a plan that we'd like to present to you. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Diana and Dave.
Thank you, Chuck, and good morning, everyone. I've got to share my screen, so bear with me for just a moment while I get that up and running. Is everyone able to see my screen at this point? Okay, terrific. So as Chuck mentioned, and as you already know, we have this significant staffing shortage. It presents a number of different challenges. I won't reiterate these because we've already talked about these, and Chuck just mentioned the quit rate, which is really the most stunning of all. So I really want to focus on what the solutions are going to be moving forward. And our solutions that we're going to present today are just a few of the key solutions that we feel could make some of the biggest differences, but we have many, many more. So certainly, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But our solutions are really designed to fill in the gaps in core value areas, so team member focus and DEI. And there's going to be an investment that we're asking for from you in various tactics and programs- in various tactics and programs to attract and retain talent. So I'd like to turn it over right now to Dave Tobin, who will talk first regarding the first category of tactics and programs that we believe will help us overcome this quit rate. Dave?
All right, thank you, Diana. Good morning, commissioners, we appreciate your time this morning. Attached to the briefing paper was actually a full summary of all of the items. Now, from a benefits and wellness perspective, I'm only going to discuss three of the seven that are listed on that exhibit. But the first is a paid parental leave policy. Not sure if you're aware, but we really don't have a formal maternity or paternity leave policy. So what we're advocating here is the introduction of a paid paternal leave. Because basically, 75% of our team members, mainly our frontline staff, don't really have any leave benefits. We follow FMLA guidelines, but that's from an unpaid leave standpoint. Our salaried employees do have short-term disabilities. So from a maternity perspective, they can either obtain six or eight weeks of continuation of salary at a 60% amount. But that's only covering about 25% of our employees. Essentially, this paid parental leave would be for bonding purposes. And unfortunately, a lot of our newer employees do not have bank time that they can use. And so we have a tendency to lose some of these folks. So, you know, this, as we did our research, as Diana said, this area is one that has been growing, you know, just across the nation and is something that companies are using to try to distinguish themselves from other employers. So what we're doing is proposing a four-week paid parental leave policy for new parents. This would be for birth and adoption, and it would be not gender-specific. So this would be for both parents, essentially. And just to give you a sense of what we do, we do benchmark against other employers specifically in our region. And typically, we look at governmental entities and others such as MSD, maybe the utilities like AMRA. And St. Louis County just passed a 12-week parental leave policy to stay competitive. They were at two weeks. So again, we're at four weeks. So this is one key item that we feel will help certainly retain employees. So Diane, if you want to move on to the next slide. The next area is childcare and elder support. This is something that, over the years, I've heard consistently, how can we better support our employees and the needs they have from a childcare and even an elder care, which is an adult over the age of 18 that perhaps someone is responsible for in some way, shape, or form. This certainly came to light quite a bit during the pandemic. And essentially, when we look at the data, our dependent ratio is pretty much on par with most other employers. 1.9 dependents per employee. Typically, that's a spouse and independent child. So this area is one we feel is somewhat of a low-cost initial investment to help reduce absenteeism.
Dave, can I ask you to hold for just a second? Rose, did I see you waving your hand there?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't know whether we should hold questions for the end or whether we could ask them as we go.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just so I don't forget, and I hate to ask people to monitor their screens for raised hands, but it might be helpful. I just wanted to know, on the paid leave, is it at the four-weeks paid leave? Is it at 60% or is it 100%? What's the percentage of pay that the parental leave is attached to?
It is estimated at 100%. So we would use 100% of pay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So back to then childcare and elder care support. So essentially, what we're offering here is priority access at subsidized rates to emergency daycare. There is a low-cost co-pay setup that could be put in place for that discounted care. And this is access to national and local care providers through vetted facilities. So think of a kinder care or something of that nature. It also allows for in-home support. So if there was a caregiver that needed to go into the home, this solution would actually help individuals vet and find someone and perhaps even a family member as well. So this is not, you know, an onsite daycare center. It is not 100%, you know, coverage for daycare, elder care. But it is a subsidized priority access approach to helping our employees with any daycare or child, excuse me, elder care support that they may need. So this is something that could be expanded actually over time. So the subsidies could be increased. But essentially, we're looking at currently our FMLA rates, people who are out for, you know, caring for children or caring for other family members. And so what we've estimated in terms of an initial investment is fairly low to help kind of cover those situations. The vendors that we've looked at in this space actually can help our employees also find permanent daycare solutions or elder care solutions, not just for emergency situations. So, you know, we believe that this is a good place to start and one that would help, again, reduce absenteeism and perhaps help with presenteeism if they don't have to worry about a family member and they're being cared for appropriately. So Diane, if you want to move on. The final one that I'm going to talk about today is tuition reimbursement and student loan subsidies. At one point, Bystate did have a tuition reimbursement program. That ended in 2009. So we've not really had a formal tuition reimbursement program since then. Clearly, tuition reimbursement, we believe, helps to attract talent. Student loan subsidies, we believe, help to retain talent. And this is an area that has grown exponentially with employers across the nation in terms of what they're trying to do to attract talent and then to retain talent. So we are proposing that we re-implement a tuition reimbursement program. That's something that we would actually administer in-house. Now, a student loan subsidy program is a little bit more complex. And, you know, there's some verification that needs to occur. And we believe there are, you know, there are vendors out in the marketplace that can help assist us with this. But essentially, the research that we've found is that with these types of programs, employers attract about five times more applicants when they're looking for talent. And that the talent stays longer. So for, you know, an age group of 25 to 34, a critical age group for us, they're staying five years versus an average of three years with employers that don't have these sorts of programs. Now, what we are proposing here is a $5,000 annual per-person benefit. We're proposing $5,000 because currently, the non-taxable limit per IRS guidelines is 5250. And so we wanted to kind of stay in a very competitive space and not cause any taxable consequences. So we don't want to have to impute income to our employees. Now, the value to Bystate is reduced payroll taxes. So this is something that we feel that, you know, will help us certainly attract and retain talent, kind of help, as Toby likes to say, add some stickiness with our employees, you know, to stay on with us over that period of time. So I'm going to stop here and just check to see if there are any questions that you have over these three particular items. As I mentioned, there are four other ones in the actual exhibit. Those other four are actually in progress. So we've already started down a path to implement those particular items. Yes, Commissioner Brown?
This is Gladney. I don't know if I can be able to hand it to you. The student loan portion, is that to address more of a salary retention than it would be operator retention?
It probably does have a higher audience with our salaried employees. But I believe that there are those out in the operational areas that do have student loans. We often get contacted for that. And, you know, there is a loan forgiveness program for governmental, you know, public service employees that we actually subscribe to. But unfortunately, it depends on what type of student loan you have. And so the beauty part about this is, no matter what type of student loan you have, this could apply. So don't just think of it in terms of a student loan associated with a degree program. It could be a student loan associated with a technical certification program, things of that nature. So it is, does have broader appeal.
Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Brown?
And that was my question also. I wanted to know what audit, what audit that entailed. And you just answered a question about what the student loan applied to. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I will turn it back over to, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Windmiller.
All right, I have one more. First of all, I'm so happy to hear about these programs. I really hope it will help. I think student loan subsidies and also loan forgiveness is a great way to go. I will encourage you under, because I'm assuming you're, the 5250 is what we call in higher ed, the section 127 of the tax code piece. I realize that it might be a little bit more challenging to make sure that you are not, that your employees are staying at 5250 or below for tax purposes in terms of your tax collection and your payroll piece. But I would really encourage you to go all the way up to it because tuition is so high these days. They really need the entire benefit. So if it's at all possible, because that tax-exempt amount of 5250 has not been risen, has not risen in many, many years. And it's something that corporations and particularly higher-aged education institutions have tried to both keep as a tax-exempt option and also have tried to raise. So, you know, I'm glad you're going to five, but 5250, every little bit will help.
Yes, thank you for that input. And I, yes, I agree. I'd be happy to do that. All right, any other questions before I turn it back over to Diane? Got some of the other areas? All right, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
You.
Sorry, our next area that we're focusing on is culture. And we have had a lot of feedback through both focus groups, interactions with various team members, as well as our employee surveys from 2020 and 2021. And one of the things that we've learned is that our employees really want to be more connected to the organization and to each other. And given the fact that the majority of our employees are deskless and out in the field, we have challenges communicating with them and keeping them connected. So keeping those deskless employees engaged is a focus area that we want to resolve. There is a communication and engagement app called Bonfire that we would like to utilize. It is designed to build belonging, trust, and make those connections that people are asking for. We can produce a variety of communications, organization communication, as well as communication between employees at all levels and in all locations. And it's also designed as a recognition tool that can help recognize team members for living our core values or for other individual or team milestones. So this is one of the things that we would like to do to help build that connection and engagement. And before I move on, just going to check to make sure, no questions? Looks like none. So the next item under culture is also something that we've heard a lot about. You all probably have seen various studies that talk about management being one of the number-one reasons why people leave organizations, and certainly toxic company culture as well. So we have a recent study by FlexJobs that indicate that, but many other studies will validate this same finding. Our internal survey scores also validate this same finding, especially amongst our union team members who had particularly low scores related to a variety of items around managers. And I've highlighted just three of those. Mutual trust and respect, open, honest, and direct communication and coaching, and being able to encourage and promote development among staff. So what we're proposing is to provide training for specifically frontline leaders and managers, things around transitioning from peer to supervisor, or how to be a stronger, more effective manager. A few years ago, we engaged with company-wide training for managers that you had approved through AAIM. And what's going to be different about this time is it's not just going to be about training. It will be inclusive of other types of developments. So mentoring programs, the use of development assessments, engaging managers to support and be involved in development of their managers, and so forth. So we're looking also at some high-potential development and professional development. But specifically, we want to target this group of individuals because that seems to be where the biggest trigger points are. Seeing no questions there, I'll move on to the next item. The next item is in response to feedback, again, from our various team members, union and non-union, in our Let's Talk Racial Equity sessions. And there is a strong desire to move beyond awareness of bias and racism in both our organization and community. So we want to be able to provide an opportunity to build capacity that helps us to reduce bias and recognize it, and then also take action. Tom Curran is going to be speaking with you about this as well. But this is something that we do see as really critical to helping build the type of culture that will retain employees. And as Chuck mentioned earlier, the type of culture that is a place where people want to work. And so this will be started with a pilot for executives and then be rolled out to managers over a three-month period. There will be training modules, case studies, and interactive sessions. So once again, I'll do a quick look to see. I don't see any questions, so I'll move on. So the next category are things that we're just calling quick hits. Things that are fairly simple to implement, not a significant cost amount, but something that we can do that means something to individual employees just to make their lives a little bit better. And so, for example, we have operator and mechanic amenities. Some things like water, having Gatorade, disinfectant wipes available, and seat cushions for all of our drivers. These are things that we've actually heard from our employees of what they need to make life on the job a little bit more pleasant. And then the next thing that we want to offer, we have looked at several agencies that are in aptum, different transit agencies, and what they're doing. And one of the things that they're doing is extending beyond employees' free transit to family members or even friends. And so we see that as sort of having a twofold benefit because it not only gives an employee something that they can share with their families or friends, but also to promote pride in the work and increase our ridership. I don't see any questions, so I will move to this highlight of, just an overview to summarize the three areas that we're focused on, benefits and wellness, culture, and finally, quick hits. As Dave mentioned, there are several other items that are listed in your packet that will include, but these are the ones that we just felt were sort of key and wanted to highlight with you. So on that note, I just want to see what questions you have.
The other questions? Of Chuck, Diana or Dave? Does that include the presentation on this item?
It does, it does. But I see Commissioner Windmiller, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to say I'm so, thanks to you and your team, I'm so glad that you're moving in this direction and it's, it's so important to build that culture. And I appreciate the update.
Thank you. And so I, I, the, what we're asking for is approval to move forward with these?
Sorry, Rose, I didn't see you there for a second. I, my screen was partially blocked by the presentation, which I think is, these initiatives are most excellent and much needed. And if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this investment of about two point six million, specifically two million six hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars for these initiatives and these programs. We have a motion by, in a second by Ms. Commissioner Brown. Any further questions or comments? Mara, do we need a roll call?
A voice vote sufficient?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eyes have it, it's passed, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for approving this. I think it's going to be a very significant change to our culture.
I agree.
Showing an investment in our team, and I think it will pay off much more than, than what it costs us.
Most excellent.
Thank you.
Item, speaking of D E I, next item is contract to work. Tom Curran, under item seven, you're up.
Thank you. We are requesting the committee's approval to authorize a contract with Diversity Works for Diversity Equity and Inclusion Consulting and Training Services for anti-bias, anti-racism training for Bi-State Development. Bi-State is committed to taking steps to advance our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. And our racial equity task force is working to promote the culture and engagement portions of our strategic plan to advance anti-racism training for our staff. On April twenty-second, a solicitation was issued seeking proposals for anti-bias, anti-racism training. In response to our public advertisement on the iSupplier Portal, only one sealed proposal was received. The Diversity Works proposal was forwarded to an evaluation committee for review. And their analysis of the proposal affirmed that the Diversity Works bid met the requirements, qualifications and experience required by the RFP. The Diversity Works proposal presents a detailed phased project approach to diversity training. And it demonstrates familiarity with the anti-bias and anti-racism needs and challenges of an organization such as Bi-State. Because only one bid was received, the contracting officer contracted other potential sources that chose not to submit a bid. Responses from those three firms are included in your packet. Two of the firms found that the iSupplier Portal was difficult to use, and one of those firms also remarked that their availability was limited. A third group required completion of forms and an extensive introductory meeting before they would decide to go forward with training, and that firm decided not to submit a bid. So management is recommending that the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval a seven-month contract with Diversity Works for anti-bias, anti-racism training in the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Deborah?
Thank you, Chairman Beach. Is this system-wide training, will all employees have this exposure, or is it you know, limited or somehow directed at certain groups?
So Diana, if I could call on you, you had described sort of how this would roll out. If I made the per commissioner to Ms. Benz, I think she could better answer that question.
Sure. So it is designed first and foremost for management because at that level, that's where we can actually take action to overcome racism and bias in the organization. So there is, in the first three months, there will be a pilot with the executive teams. And then it will roll out to all managers. Chances are, there will be some sort of follow-up that we can perhaps support internally versus with a consultant. But right now, the target audience is all management staff.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? We need a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And this will be forwarded to the full board as well. Next item, number eight. New Agenda Board Policy Revisions, Chapter Thirty, Audit, Finance and Budget. Tammy Fulbright, you are up.
Thank you. Good morning. We're requesting approval for several changes to board Chapter Thirty, Audit, Finance and Budget. So I apologize in advance for the length and we'll move along quickly. So for Section thirty thirty Annual Budget, we are requesting to update titles and the budget cycle to a three-year capital budget. This is necessary to meet the requirements for the Three-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. For Section thirty forty Banking and Investments, the requested changes include providing priority for objectives in investing, identifying the positions that are authorized to invest and opening and closing accounts, identifying authorized investments and required collateralization, acknowledging the required monitoring and reporting requirements to competitively bid investments, maturity limitations and diversification requirements, updating titles and increasing secondary signatures from seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand on checks, removing the self-insurance reference as these claims are now paid by a third party, requiring a board member's signature for ACH payments over a million, this aligns with the check signature policy, identifying agency funds by type of fund instead of by account. For Section thirty fifty Financial Reporting, we are requesting to remove the cash receipts and disbursements reporting. The cash flow reporting will provide more clarity at a higher level. For Section thirty eighty Debt Issuance and Administration, the requested changes include allowing a request for proposal instead of having a pool of underwriters prior to an issuance or refunding of bonds. Adding the word generally as it relates to the term for financing a debt issuance, federal tax law allows for a term up to a hundred and twenty percent of the economic life of an asset. Cleaning up language for escrow structuring to address the lack of availability of state and local government serious securities. Cleaning up language to provide equality for negotiated sales versus competitive sales. Cleaning up the language to state the CFO will provide information to credit rating agencies periodically as requested instead of annually. In addition, adding the Core Bond Rating Agency was added to the list of credit rating agencies. And finally, adding language to include maintaining records for expenditures and investments of bond proceeds and information related to periodic reviews of the use of bond finance facilities. So these are the changes for Board Policy, Chapter Thirty, that we are requesting approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Lot of housekeeping there.
Yes.
And I did read everything. Well, I skimmed through most of it, but I did look at it all.
Thank you.
As you said. Any, any, any questions? A motion is needed to approve these revisions?
More moves.
Second, Windmiller.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Uh, we get in some information only. Items now, item nine in the agenda, Contract to Work Fair Collection Program Consultant. Tom, you're back up.
Thank you. The next agenda item is a contract to work for a fair collection program consultant. Bi-State is beginning its process to revise our fare policy and how we collect fares, including new ticket vending machines and validators for MetroLink and new fare boxes for Metrobus. This fare modernization process is directly tied to the Secure Platform Project or SPP, which is dependent upon updated fare media to open the planned gates at all MetroLink stations. The Fair Collection Program Consultant will assist staff in reviewing our fair collection efforts to date, analyzing the previous RFP for a new system, preparing a request for information for new equipment, developing bid-ready specifications for new ticket vending machines, integrating and testing replacement equipment, reviewing electronic transaction security, and finally, project planning and management. The anticipated time period for this work is two years, and this coincides with the SPP project timeframe. Bi-State issued an RFP on June twenty-fifth to solicit bidders for this project, and three proposals were received. The proposals were deemed to be responsive to our request, and they were evaluated by a committee consisting of representatives from administration, grants, revenue and the St. Clair County Transit District. After technical scoring was completed, a consensus meeting was held to discuss both the technical and the cost scores. Consult Hyperion was the highest ranking firm. Bi-State will negotiate a contract with Consult Hyperion for the provision of the services requested in the solicitation. The cost for these services is being funded through federal grants, and this contract is being presented for informational purposes only. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We will move on to item ten, Internal Audit. Follow-up summary for the fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Crystal Mezner, please.
Thank you, Chairman Beach. Good morning, commissioners. And to be considerate of everyone's time, I have three agenda items, ten, eleven and twelve, that are all for informational purposes. I would like to present these all at one time.
Please.
For, thank you. For Agenda Item ten, this is our follow-up summary for fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. As you can see, we have about seventy-seven percent complete, fifteen percent outstanding and nine percent, excuse me, eight percent overdue. The eight, the eight percent overdue is just like we had talked previously in the last committee meeting. Just a lack of staff, which is a consensus of this committee conversation so far and operations committee. But I do want to commend the agency as a whole. Getting these corrective action plans completed, we've had two very significant areas that were completed last quarter. And that was for the drug and alcohol policy. That touches a lot of areas, not just operations, that goes through legal and HR. So I just want to commend everyone on their efforts to do that, that actually closed out drug and alcohol policy findings. And then it was also in our SSO compliance for federal, state and local requirements. So that closed out two findings, getting that completed. So I want to commend them in their efforts. For Agenda Item number eleven, that's our fourth quarter internal audit status report. IED did begin the systems access review and the physical access review audits in April. We did extend the scope out of the systems access audit due to risks that were identified, while the physical access audit itself is reaching its completion time. The Arts and River Boats audit is progressing as expected. And the procurement card audit was complete and presented at the special board meeting on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two for final approval. For Agenda Item number twelve, that is our State Safety Oversight Status Report, and that falls on a calendar year for two thousand and twenty-two, so that's only in the second quarter. For the second quarter, we were able to complete the items that we had presented to be accomplished. We're continuing to work with safety and management to monitor the progress for all open SSO and SCADA caps. Management successfully closed out five caps. I believe this is quite the accomplishment for one quarter's worth of work. And our partners are Bi-State Safety Oversight. MoDOT and IDOT are present during these meetings, and it has facilitated quite the great conversation and efficiencies in moving along with these corrective action plans being taken care of and closed out. Our audit plan, of course, is on schedule. We did have our pre-audit meeting with everyone in safety and security and all of our people that we anticipate as being audit customers for this year. These also include bus in Colorado activities. So very excited to, to review those this year. And we've worked very closely with our operations to ensure them of what the processes are, what kind of resources are expected of them, and that we are open door policy for any questions they may have as the audit process continues throughout the year. We will be onsite conducting our field work September the thirteenth through the fifteenth to review those. And that concludes my quarterly update for internal audit. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Very, very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen Pension Plans, 401K Retirement Savings Program and OPEB Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Investment Performance Update as of June thirtieth. Chuck, you're back up.
Uh, thank you very much, Commissioner. Going to do an update as of June thirty on our pension, our 401K and our OPEB trust. Suffice it to say, it's been a bad year. For example, in our 401K, assets at June thirty were seventy-one point six million, down from eighty-seven point five at the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. Although we had three million dollars in new contributions, the plan was down fifteen point nine million over this period of time. You will find that this theme is consistent throughout our various funds. In the salary pension plan, at June thirty, we were at ninety point one million. Nine point nine million investment loss in the second quarter. And sixteen, fourteen point six million in losses for the first half of the year. For IBW, as of June thirty, our plan assets were six point six million. The portfolio declined ten point nine percent during the second quarter or a total of negative, a negative sixteen point five for the year. And for our seven eighty-eight plan, fund assets at June thirty were five, hundred and fifty-six point six million. Cash flows are a significant issue in this, in this plan because we need investment earnings to support the cash outflows for paying of benefits. The portfolio experienced losses of thirty point eight million for the first part of this year, for the first half. OPEB Trust, market value of fifty-two point five million. Year-to-date performance is down twelve point nine percent. In consideration of where we stand in these funds, as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, the salary plan was eighty-three point three percent funded. IBW was eighty-five point five at March first, at April first, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-one. And seven eighty-eight was at seventy point six percent funded at April one. That concludes my presentation on the performance for these funds. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Chuck? We'll move forward to items fourteen and fifteen, while combining quarterly financial statements and the Treasuries Report. Tammy Fulbright?
Yes, thank you. For the financials, at June thirtieth, we had one point four billion in assets. Transit income was eighty-one point seven million. So mentionable items for revenue are twenty point one million in passenger revenue. This is nine hundred thousand less than budget. Sales tax is under budget by fourteen million and is covered with COVID relief funds. Federal funding was ninety-six point eight million, and this is a result of the application for additional federal COVID relief funds. And it required us to draw down the remaining cares funds. Mentionable items for expense, wages and benefits are down eight point four million due to the worker shortage. Services are down three point nine million, primarily due to non-capitalized projects. And materials and supplies are down four point two million due to supply chain issues. We did accrue from, for some additional expense that we're allowed to do that if we're actually ordering the parts ahead of time. So that, we did do that. And then diesel fuel is down five million as a result of the fuel hedge. This funding will be needed to buy future contracts in the upcoming months. The eighty-one point seven million is, in income is inclusive of twenty-four million in revenue recognized for the Illinois allocation and fifty-seven point seven million in revenue recognized for the Missouri share of the COVID relief funds. Executive services had five hundred thousand in income. The RCH had a hundred and thirty thousand in income, and it's important to note that in two thousand and twenty-two, they had two and a half times the ridership of two thousand and twenty-one at over five hundred thousand rides. The airport ended the year with a loss of three hundred thousand after depreciation. The overall business is still impacted by the downturn in the economy. For riverboats, they had income of seven hundred and fifty thousand after depreciation. The riverboat passengers have almost doubled since last year to a hundred and thirty thousand, and we had three hundred and thirty-two more cruises since last year. For the freightway, they ended the year with a loss of eighty-six thousand.
For the freightway, they ended the year with a loss of 86,000. The Ruben Brown auditors are performing our annual audit currently, and our draft financials will be presented to the committee in October and the board in November. For the Treasuries Report, at June 30, Bi-State-directed funds were 309 million with an average rate of return of 1.2%. Trustee-directed funds were 54 million with an average rate of return of 1.3. We had some investment purchases in the fourth quarter of 19.5 million with an average rate of return of 2.9%. And for the fuel hedge, we consumed 3.5 million gallons of diesel fuel this year at $2.79 a gallon for a total of $9.9 million. But with the hedge, the price per gallon was $1.25, and the cost was 4.4 million. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you for that information, your report. We'll move forward to the procurement report, item 16 on the agenda. Tom Curran?
Yes, the last item in today's packet is the procurement report, which contains four components. The first is a non-competitive procurement trend for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22. You can see a very large increase in both overall spending and in non-competitive spending last quarter. Non-competitive spending was 28.3% of the total. I predicted this increase at our last committee meeting as sole source expenditures related to our SCADA system and MetroLink communication systems upgrade hit this past quarter. The rolling 12-month average of non-competitive procurements as a percentage of all procurements is 18.4%. The second component is procurement card transactions report. There was one confirmed procedural violation during the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22 with a transaction amount of $6,000 that had been split into two payments. For all of fiscal year 2022, there were 16,489 transactions made with procurement cards for a total cost of $4.69 million. The third report is a list of all contracts over $100,000 for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2022. The largest of these contracts was 4.5 million for our SCADA system upgrade. The final component of the procurement report is the contract modification report for the fourth quarter. Most of the modifications involve either exercising option years on existing contracts and also time extensions. As always, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you. I've been advised by Mr. Roach that he, there is no unscheduled business and he has no report at this time for this committee. Mara, upcoming board and committee meeting dates, please.
The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September 23rd. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October 6th. And the next Operations Committee and Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meetings will be held on Friday, October 14th, all beginning at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. At this time, we need to adjourn and go to executive session. I need a motion that this committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080D1 Legal, D3 Personnel, or, and/or D10 Auditors. Is there a motion, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Win Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.
We will be coming back shortly in open session to take any final vote. Do I have a motion to approve, we're back in open session, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 10 2022 Combined Audit, Finance, Administration and Operations Committee Executive Session as a closed record?
So moved.
More moves. More seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Win Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.
And finally, adjournment, is there, if there's no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn this committee meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and I'll have, everyone have a, please have a great weekend.
You too.